Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the eighth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Thank you all for coming in early today to accommodate our traveling commissioner. Commissioner Hong, are you online?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine, thank you. Are you in the room alone, or is there anyone with you?
I am alone.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner? There are some minutes to approve. Commissioners, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for the thirty-fourth and forty-sixth meetings as previously circulated.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. The minutes of the thirty-fourth and forty-sixth meetings as previously circulated are approved. Now, we will move into our regular calendar for this afternoon. Under public hearings, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number two-one-dash-two-three-zero-six-seven from Waikiki Beer Company, L.P.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission. This is your I, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Waikiki Beering Company. Respectfully request to proceed. I'm in authorization for this application. My client was trying to get here in time, but I guess he wasn't able to make it. I'm in authorization. I have no changes to investigative report.
Thank you, Mr. Uyoka. Not a problem. We understand that time is challenging today. Ms. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Ry. Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony as to agenda item number one? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioners, questions, comments, or type of action?
Mr. Uyoka, I'm looking through the report, right? I mean, there was some violations for some of the other businesses in 2022. Let's just remind your client to keep an eye on those things.
Will do.
That's all.
Thank you.
If no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve transfer application two-one-dash-two-three-zero-six-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Transfer application number two-one-dash-two-three-zero-six-seven is approved.
Thank you so much, Mr. Uyoka.
Calling agenda item number two, transfer application number two-three-dash-zero-one-five-five-two from Manakama LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission. Great to show authorization of hearing on behalf of the applicant. At this point, we would ask the Commission to continue this matter. It's been brought to light, there's some, maybe some issues with regard to the ownership percentages that we may have to fix, and I think we're gonna need to adjust that in order to allow the application to proceed. We were advised by investigator phone yesterday.
Okay.
So we kind of need to discuss that with our client, and we'd like the opportunity to do that. We do know that the temporary license does expire within three weeks, but the ability to fix this problem is... I mean, we could've done it by today if we had the chances to speak with our clients, but we haven't had that chance yet, so...
Did you want to continue to a date certain or the next available calendar?
If we could to a date certain, within that three-week period, but I don't know what the Commission's schedule is like, or calendars like. So if it's necessary, we are ready to, you know, go for a second. We have, you know, discussing with Mr. Shin Sato, we are ready to do that, if necessary. I mean, it's at the, whatever fits in the Commission's calendar schedule.
If you're gonna continue this matter, it needs to be to a date certain. We have a meeting scheduled on the thirty-first. So far, we're okay on the September seventh and fourteenth, twenty-one and twenty-eight. So, but it needs to be to a date certain.
If we go maybe September fourteenth, that'll give us three weeks to...
And then public hearing kept open?
Yep.
Yes.
So agenda item number two is continue to September fourteenth calendar date with the public hearing kept open?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Calling agenda item number three, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-seven-seven-six from Wunja Bishop Pantry Corporation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. To my right is Langzi Lata. She is the president and owner for the applicant corporation. Matter of record, reflect Wayne Luke is attorney for the applicant. We have no changes to investigation report.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Ms. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Ry. Is there anyone who'd like to provide public testimony as to agenda item number three? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioners, any comments, questions, or type of action?
I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-seven-seven-six.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-seven-seven-six is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number four, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-nine-six-five from Mr. Sangriabar LLC.
Good afternoon. Kester Johnson, owner of Mr. Sangriabar Perrier Center. No changes to investigation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Ry. Is there anyone who'd like to provide public testimony as to agenda item number four? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioners?
I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-nine-six-five.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-nine-six-five is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving into our special license applications, calling agenda item number five, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-five-zero from Events International, Inc. Oh, online. Could you please state your name for the record?
Lee Lam.
Lee Lam, thank you. Okay, could you just briefly summarize your event?
Our event is, it's a hosted event. Basically, it's just for industry, industry people. So we have six mixologists that come in and just make their special cocktails. It's all by invitation.
And the anticipated number in attendance will be around two-hundred-and-fifty, is that right?
We're hoping, yeah, but last year we had only like a hundred-and-forty, so...
Okay. Commissioners?
I have no questions. Approve, motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-five-zero.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-five-zero is approved. Thank you, Ms. Lam.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-five-nine from I Can I Will Hawaii.
Online.
Online.
Aloha, members of the Commission. My name is Jason Park, President of I Can I Will Hawaii, local nonprofit here in Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Mr. Park. So this is for a special nonprofit license. Could you explain the fundraiser that they've been hosting?
Yeah, it's a one-day concert happening September twenty-third at Aloha Stadium's Upper Halavalot. It's gonna be also celebrating the release of a local band, Rebel Soldiers, as they're performing for us. That's gonna be their CD release party, and we are going to have an area for family area. There's going to be a six-to-eight-foot barricaded area separating the twenty-one and over. And we just put on KCCN's birthday bash July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth previous. At the stadium, there were no incidents. Let's see, footprint is gonna be about the same. Rain is our security guards, and we're gonna have wristbanding everybody twenty-one and over, and I'm open to any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Commissioner?
Mr. Park, do you guys have a current number of tickets that you've sold already?
Yeah, right now, let me look at my record real quick. We're way under capacity. We're about forty-five-hundred right now.
Okay. Okay, that's the only question I have. Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-five-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-five-nine is approved. Thank you, Mr. Park.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
You too. Calling agenda item number seven, applications number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-six-eight-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-six-eight-dash-ten inclusive from Qantas Airways Limited.
Good afternoon, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Qantas Airways. At this time, I'd like to respectfully request to withdraw this special license application. We were fortunate to get the license issued today, so we no longer need a special license on this. We'd like to also request a refund of the twenty-seven-hundred-dollar filing fee. We did apply for thirty days on this matter.
Good news, Mr. Uyoka. I'm glad to hear that your application was approved. Commissioners, any comments on either the withdrawal or the request for refunding?
We can't, yeah, the refunded portion, I just, I don't...
From the point of order, I believe we can't issue a refund.
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I have no questions. Do we need a motion?
Yes, if you take action on the withdrawal and the refund.
Okay, so motion to withdraw applications two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-six-eight-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-six-eight-dash-ten inclusively and also the request for the refund for the thirty-day...
For those applications?
For those applications.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Applications number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-six-eight-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-six-eight-dash-ten inclusively are withdrawn and a refund to be provided to the applicant for said applications.
Thank you so much, Ron. Also wanna thank supervising prosecutor Daniel Sato for getting this on the agenda today.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eight, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-two from Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde Inc. Commissioner?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Shiloh Kano, Event Coordinator for Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde and Authorized Agent. With me, I have Samuel Leroy, General Manager.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So we have a birthday party. Both areas are licensed, is that correct?
Correct.
And what's your expected attendance for this hundred people?
About a hundred people, yes.
Commissioners?
So my comment will be the same as I've made in numerous of Coolson Catering's things, when they have the courtyard licensed as well. Please, let's make sure we continue to keep an eye out there for passing or any type of giving hand back and forth of drinks. That's the only comment I have.
And Mr. Leroy, like I, I'm calling from London. It's dark here, but I couldn't let the birthdays go without alcohol, so I'm here on your behalf.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion.
No.
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-two.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-two is approved. Calling agenda item number nine, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-three from Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Shiloh Kano, Event Coordinator for Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde and Authorized Agent. With me, I have Samuel Leroy, General Manager.
Good afternoon. So we have another birthday party, two-hundred people.
Yes.
Same setup. Commissioner Hong might come, I don't know.
Invited.
Invited. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-three.
Second, as amended with the invite.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-three is approved. Calling agenda item number ten, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-four from Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Shiloh Kano, Event Coordinator for Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde and Authorized Agent. With me, I have Samuel Leroy, General Manager.
Good afternoon. So another birthday party. This is an eighteen, so we would ask for caution since it's closer to a twenty-one-year age, and so people might be trying to sneak some drinks. Two-hundred-and-fifty people, the bar is outside in this case, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner?
I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-four.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-four is approved. We are going to call two items out of order. Calling agenda item number fourteen, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-five from Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Shiloh Kano, Event Coordinator for Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde and Authorized Agent. With me, I have Samuel Leroy, General Manager.
Good afternoon. So this is a catering event for a wedding reception, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other details to provide are the same as your other events?
Um...
Same.
Everything's the same, yes.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-five.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-five is approved. Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-six from Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Shiloh Kano, Event Coordinator for Coolson Catering by Senior Blonde and Authorized Agent. With me, I have Samuel Leroy, General Manager.
Okay, so another birthday party, two-hundred-and-fifty people with the bar inside.
Yes.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-six.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-six is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Moving back up in our calendar, calling agenda item number eleven, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-five from Memoirs LLC. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Taylor Passion here with Memoirs LLC, General Manager. I don't have any updates to the investigative report.
Okay, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-five.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-five is approved. Calling agenda item number twelve, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-six from Memoirs LLC.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. My name is Taylor Passion, the General Manager of Memoirs LLC, and I also have no adjustments to this investigative report.
Okay, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-six.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-six is approved. Calling agenda item number thirteen, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-nine from Memoirs LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Taylor Passion, the General Manager of Memoirs LLC. I do not have any adjustments to this investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-nine is approved. Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-seven from Memoirs LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Taylor Passion, the General Manager of Memoirs LLC. I do not have any adjustments to this investigative report.
Is this the first time you'll be in the Hawaii State Museum?
This will be the first time we're at High Slam, correct?
Commissioners?
And this, I'm just trying to look. This event is, it's not a wedding, so specifically...
The Hala Aina Awards.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-seven.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-seven is approved. Calling agenda item number seventeen, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-eight from Memoirs LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Taylor Passion, the General Manager of Memoirs LLC. I don't have any adjustments to this investigative report.
Thank you, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-two-eight is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eighteen, applications number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-six-eight-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-six-eight-dash-nineteen inclusively from Han Gang, Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair Members of the Commission. Keith Kiuchi, Attorney and Authorized Agent for the applicant. We have no changes to the investigator's report. Thank Investigator Sato for getting this on the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi.
I have no questions. I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-six-eight-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-six-eight-dash-nineteen inclusively.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Applications number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-six-eight-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-six-eight-dash-nineteen inclusively are approved. Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nineteen, applications number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-seven-one-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-seven-one-dash-eighteen exclusively from Ohana P.H.L. LLC.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair Members of the Commission. Keith Kiuchi, Attorney and Authorized Agent for Ohana P.H.L. LLC. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator's report. Thank Investigator Sato for getting this on the calendar. This is the second series of special licenses. It shouldn't be beyond the seventeenth, because if you notice on the agenda, number twenty-five is Ohana P.H.L.'s preliminary hearing, so...
That's correct, and we'll take that out of order next.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve applications two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-seven-one-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-seven-one-dash-eighteen inclusively.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Applications number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-seven-one-dash-one through two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-seven-one-dash-eighteen inclusively are approved. Calling out of order, agenda item number twenty-five, application number two-three-dash-zero-one-nine-zero-six from Ohana P.H.L. LLC.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair Members of the Commission. Keith Kiuchi, Attorney and Authorized Agent for Ohana P.H.L. LLC. We have no additions or corrections to the investigator's report. We would ask, however, that the public hearing be held seven weeks from today, because if it was eight weeks, it'd be October nineteenth, and the Commission does not need on the nineteenth. So we'd ask that be set for October twelfth, which is seven weeks from now.
Ms. Ry, is that acceptable?
Yeah, you can make that request, or you can make the request, and you can approve going forward with that.
It is October twelfth, unacceptable.
Um, I don't think so. Let me just double-check. Yes, we are good to go on the twelfth.
Okay. Mr. Kiuchi, you've been operating on specials, anything...
They've actually done pretty well on specials. I've actually physically been downed, because I've double-checked the layout. It looks like they're doing fine, so...
Good, okay. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-one-nine-zero-six with the verbiage to hold the...
Public hearing.
A public hearing on seven weeks from now, on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, sorry.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-one-nine-zero-six is approved with the public hearing scheduled for October twelfth. Thank you very much, Mr. Kiuchi. Moving back up our agenda for this afternoon, calling agenda item number twenty, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-three-four-eight from Core Hawaii F&amp;B LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners, Von Cook appearing on behalf of the applicant, Core Hawaii F&amp;B LLC. Doing business as a Holiday and Express Waikiki. With me, on my right is John Kihano, the Assistant General Manager, and on my left is Brett Akimoro, the F&amp;B Manager.
Good afternoon.
We have reviewed the licensing investigative report, have one change. Instead of three-hundred-and-sixty-five units, I just checked today on a visit, there's five-hundred-and-ninety-nine units.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-three-four-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-three-four-eight is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. May I also make one request for clarification? Will the public hearing be on October twelfth, twenty-nineteen, forty-nine days from today? If not, could we request the Commission approve that?
You can make that request.
Okay. We request that the hearing, public hearing be held on October twelfth, twenty-nineteen, which would be forty-nine days from today. And I believe that exceeds the statutory requirement of forty-five days.
It's seven weeks.
May I make a clarification? Twenty-nineteen would be way previously before, so I cannot say approval of that, so if you can please...
Thank you, Commissioner Hollinger. If I could clarify, we request seven weeks from today, which would be October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Commissioners?
Motion, okay, so we're already approved it, but then we have to add the motion to, um...
Set public hearing.
Behold the public hearing on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. The request is approved. The public hearing for application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-three-four-eight will be held on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-six-nine-zero from Hiduro, Inc.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair Members of the Commission. Keith Kiuchi, Authorized Agent and Attorney for the applicant. We have no changes to investigative report, and consistent with my other client, we'd ask that the public hearing be held seven weeks from today on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-six-nine-zero with the verbiage the public hearing to be held on October twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-zero-six-nine-zero is approved with the public hearing scheduled for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, and just one thing. I gotta leave, because I have a court hearing, but item number twenty-nine, Shira Kia, does not have an objection to that. And given the history of that, I think that's probably important to put that on record.
Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two, application number two-three-dash-zero-one-four-six-nine from Eastside Associate LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Aaron Munn, Attorney for applicant, Eastside Bar and Grill. I'm appearing with John Adolfo, General Manager of applicant. We have no changes to the investigative report. For the record, applicant is currently operating on temporary and special licenses with no problems.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-one-four-six-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-one-four-six-nine is approved. Thank you, Attorney. Calling agenda item number twenty-three, application number two-three-dash-zero-one-six-two-eight from Bokanchino Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and board members. My name is Desiree Lo Prestiello. I'm the owner of Bokanchino Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-one-six-two-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-one-six-two-eight is approved. Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, application number two-three-dash-zero-one-seven-two-nine from Fugiram Waikiki International LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission members. Kenneth O'Neal appearing for the applicant. And appearing virtually is Fumiaki, F-U-M-I-A-K-I Matsu, M-A-T-S-U. He's the Executive Manager for the applicant. No changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, Mr. Aki. Can you hear us okay? Great, thank you. Good afternoon. Commissioners?
Questions? Um, motion to approve application number two-three-dash-zero-one-seven-two-nine.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any objections or reservations? Hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion carries. Application number two-three-dash-zero-one-seven-two-nine is approved. Thank you, Desiree.
Thank you.
Moving into catering licenses, calling agenda item number twenty-six, application number two-four-dash-zero-zero-three-one-four from Platinum Partners, Inc., DBA Scratch Kitchen in Veterine.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Aaron Munn appearing for applicant. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Aaron Munn appearing for applicant Platinum Partners Inc. Appearing with me is Gary Chan, Secretary and Director of applicant. We've reviewed the report and have no changes for the record. Uh, applicant is currently operating on catering licenses with no problems. And this is a request to extend the catering dates for another sixty days while applicant works to file a permanent application.
Thank you very much. Um, is that filed already or is it pending?
It's not filed yet.
It's not filed? Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two four dot zero zero three one four.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Application number two four dash zero zero three one four is approved. Thank you very much. Moving into, uh, requests, calling agenda item number twenty-seven, request number two four dash zero zero one seven one from Sedexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, Commission. Patrick Baugh, General Manager and Authorized Agent for Sedexo. No changes to the report. This request is for the University of Hawaii football clarification. We asked for the extension because we have to use the baseball space and licensing, so we extended it to meet so we don't have crossover licenses.
Thank you. Commissioners?
So about, so last season, you guys extended the same way, right?
Correct.
Was everything okay? Any incidents? Anything happen between those time periods?
No, nothing unusual. We haven't had any citations or anything like that. We have a large number of security, normal things that you might have at a football game, but we fall through.
I have a question. About how many people do you throw out for underage drinking?
So last year, we, I wanna say exited on an average game, probably three or four people. But that, what, I didn't keep specific with, you know, off the top of my head, I can't say whether there were, but it's like three or four people a game. It might have been due to intoxication, fighting, um, could have been underage, but the sections for, um, students are very well defined, and we put extra security in that space. So it's a lot harder to pass.
Okay, good, good. If you said zero, I would have been really suspect, but thank you.
We did trespass two people last year, but that wasn't underage also, so, but yes, we do have security, HPD, campus security all there at the same time, so.
All right.
Um, one quick thing, if you can, for this season, I mean, I'm assuming as we continue moving forward, we're going to be looking at this area to be permanent for a little while as their stadium going forward for a while. Um, if you can keep a little bit of a record, if you do end up with having to escort or have people leave due to underage, just so we can have an idea for next season.
But we do keep a security log. It's just off the top of my head, it kind of, but we do have a log, so.
When you come for the next one, maybe if you have some of those numbers in the future.
We'll do.
Motion to approve, request number two four dot zero zero one seven one.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two four dash zero zero one seven one is approved. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, request number two four dash zero zero three four zero from TBB Holdings.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zibakalom, on behalf of TBB Holdings, DBA tax eight oh eight. Um, I can provide a little bit of background on this request, if the commissioner would like.
Yes, please.
Uh, so this is just a reapplication of already issued temporary license dates. Uh, the business was not in operation during the first temporary license and during the fourth and second temporary license. So we're just gonna continue, we're continuing using those days that were previously paid for but unused to bridge the gap between, uh, the full license application being completed. Uh, we are still currently waiting for our preliminary hearing.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Zibakalom. Uh, commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number two four dot zero zero three four zero.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two four dash zero zero three four zero is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-nine, request number two four dash zero zero two eight five from Terrence Lee on behalf of Alamoana Anchor Acquisition LLC and GGP Alamoana LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Terry Lee on behalf of the request store. This, this is hopefully the last matter that will have to appear for the commission regarding the Alamoana Shopping Center and Shirakiya drama. As part of the settlement, uh, the landlord was, uh, tight ownership of the liquor inventory was transferred to the landlord. And so landlord is now trying to monetize it by auctioning it off.
And for the record, Keith Kiuchi was in previously. He represents Shirakiya in this negotiation, and he said there are no objections to this request. Uh, commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number two four dot zero zero two eight five.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two four dash zero zero two eight five is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving into other business, calling agenda item number thirty, Assistant Administrator, third review of application number one eight dash one three one three three from Blind Ox LLC.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this matter was rescheduled from the, uh, August third meeting. My recollection is the, uh, the licensee did not, um, did not attend either. At this point, I would suggest that, um, we make one final co- uh, attempt to contact Blind Ox and see if they in fact wish to have additional time within which to effect the license before we basically, um, sort of cancel out the prior approval for this.
Ms. Rai, how was contact previously made in terms of notice for this hearing? Do we know?
Um, I don't have that information handy. Typically would have been, um, uh, by letter.
By, by letter, mail, mail, US mail?
I apologize. This is Emmanuel. If mind if I jump in? I do have a little bit of information on this.
Please do, and say your name for the record.
Sure, this is Emmanuel Zibakalom. I was contacted by the owner in Aiketa regarding this matter, uh, just in regard to advice. An A wasn't issued, so I can't make, um, I can't make any specific, um, I guess, mo- you know, movements on this particular issue, but he has been notified of letter was provided. Um, however, the mo- the notification did come, uh, Tuesday of this week, I believe. Um, the current stance of the applicant is he's still hoping to have the license issued. Uh, that being said, he understands the commission, um, does require notification to individuals within five hundred feet and that this application has been taken on for this, uh, series of time. So we, we got the commission's discretion, um, in regards to the construction. Uh, he's still off on getting a permit for the BMX three, um, building that would be, be constructed in entirety before the license could be issued.
So this application was granted on, uh, March eighth of twenty eighteen, but the, uh, applicant or has not been able to effect the license. So the, uh, ergo, the reason for this, uh, the continued ex- extensions. Uh, Mr. Zibakalom is, uh, on record as authorized agent. I don't have that information in front of me. You could actually, I, I guess, make the request on behalf of the applicant, but he may not be the authorized agent of record.
Yeah, sounded like he may not be, Mr. Zibakalom. Are you the authorized agent?
Unfortunately not. I believe that expired four years ago.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess a clarification question, I mean, how long can we continue in a sense giving them an opportunity to come to us once we've approved the license? Because technically, at this point, I don't know if they're in the same place, the same area, I mean, floor plan, everything, because it seems like they're still constructing, right? So is there a time period that we can continue to keep a license active or continuing to extend for them to pick it up?
The, the reason why the, for this rule is so that, uh, an applicant in this situation basically doesn't block other, other individuals from applying for that space, because while they hold that space, no one else can go in there. I do not have information if there has been, uh, interest in, uh, occupying that space. But it is, yeah, we're looking at five years now.
Yeah, I will, I will note that the spacing question that will be occupied is an owner occupancy. So in regards to the landlord tenant dispute, I don't think that would be an issue moving forward.
Okay, this has been, uh, an open application for quite some time, but I would prefer, if it's possible, to have someone actually appear and make representations on behalf of the applicant. Um, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Zibakalom, but you're not the registered agent, so they're not official comments from the applicant itself. Um, I would be inclined to continue the matter one final time to, um, allow the applicant one final chance to come in and explain the situation so that we can understand. Mr. Zibakalom, you're, of course, in no position to do this if you don't feel like it, but if you know the applicant and can contact them and tell them, you know, what, what you stated and, and what we've stated, that might be helpful to them. But given the fact that you represented that they may have been given notice of this hearing, um, only recently, I would be inclined to continue it one final time.
And I'll, I'll, I'll make sure, thank you, I'll, I'll make sure to reach out, um, within the next few days to, uh, bring the applicant up to speed and, and make sure that there, some, someone is at the next hearing. I apologize, commissioners.
Can, I guess my question is, can we make a motion?
You can go to next avail- yeah, to next available.
Do we make a motion, or can we, like, set, set a date certain so that someone can give them that, or?
It's up, it's, it's your dr- I mean, we could, uh, continue to next available and try to work with the, uh, the applicant to find a mutually, mutually agreeable time, or you can go ahead and just set a date certain.
If we set a date certain, then Mr. Zibakalom, being present, would know the dates and would be able to more easily probably notify the, the applicant.
Yes, I would agree. You could pass that information on unofficially.
Yes.
So why don't we, I would make a motion, um, to continue this matter, I know we say like September fourteenth, that's like a, three weeks from now? I mean, gives them an opportunity.
I would agree.
Would that work?
Okay. We'll set this matter for the September fourteenth, uh, agenda.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Zibakalom.
Thank you, Professor.
Calling agenda item number thirty-one, request number two four dash zero zero three two one from Robert Uyoka on behalf of Crazy Honukai.
Good afternoon, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Bluefish Waikiki. This is a request for a leave to file a temporary liquor license application. The previous liquor license was filed by Cheeseburger Beachwalk, canceled in September twenty twenty due to COVID. Um, Bluefish Waikiki would like to take this space. It's on the second floor of the Outrider Waikiki Beachwalk. Uh, it's been a relatively difficult place to, to fill, but we have, there is a tenant right now, my client. Um, Bluefish Waikiki just let you know, it's a premium sushi and sashimi restaurant. They have restaurants, I think they have six in Texas, one in Colorado and one in Korea. So, um, I know everyone's excited to have this space used. We're looking at an opening date in mid-October. So we wanted to have the opportunity to get a temporary license, um, not necessarily by that date, but just, um, at some point. Uh, we did file also a, a restaurant application for Bluefish Waikiki in, I think it was, was July third, that's pending. But this specific request is just a leave to be able to file a temporary application, um, for the old Cheeseburger Beachwalk space.
Is anyone in the space or are you occupying it?
There's no one there right now. Yeah, it's, it's been empty ever since Cheeseburger got out, so.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number two four dot zero zero three two one.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second and the objections or reservations hearing and seeing none, I also vote aye, the motion carries. Request number two four dash zero zero three two one is approved. Thank you so much. Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty-two, Liquor Administrator, Administrative Matters. Ms. Rai.
Uh, I don't have anything to add to the report that I circulated earlier today. Uh, the administr- uh, the administrator is in the audience if he wishes to add anything or say anything.
Assistant.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sal Patilos, Administrator of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. I think in terms of an update, I think, um, Assistant Administrator Hera is informing you of the fact that we have put together multifunctional team to respond to, uh, weight chance recommendations in, in, in the system's review. Uh, we have scheduled bi-weekly meetings for status updates and as well as course corrections as necessary. So we're moving forward in those things and, and, and hopefully we'll be able to address most of those issues, uh, in the coming, in the coming months.
Thank you very much. Uh, commissioners, any questions, uh, for either Ms. Rai or Mr. Patilos? Uh, hearing and seeing none, uh, this, uh, meeting is adjourned.
Yay!
Excellent.
Under an hour.
Boy, I couldn't even have gotten on the map.
Thank you, Vice Chair.